Does everybody settle down? Be sure to turn yourself on this down to the bottom. And we'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had a chance to go with the meeting? Meetings from the previous meetings? I didn't see any...
Chairman, back in the...
Back in the mission, we set you ready. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is that a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion, additions or clarification? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passing yes. The next item is the report from the Board of Commissioners. May I agree?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Commissioners had their last regular meeting on July the 15th. And items of interest for the Planning Commission. There were a number. It was quite a long meeting. One of the things that we've talked about for quite some time is developing an app and website that we could use to help notify citizens of different things that are coming out, you know, road closures or any sort of emergency events or something. And so we've been talking about it for quite some time and we've investigated several different vendors. And we did take some action on this and approved funds to be able to initiate an app and a website development. And I think that would be real helpful for our community. So that's one item to bring to your attention. We also had some discussion about an occupancy tax. And so we've become aware that it is possible for the city to leverage a little bit of additional occupancy tax on top of whatever's already being levied. And it's got to be for tourism development. But for so many of the projects that we have in the city, y'all are aware of a number of them, these things that are, you know, useful for our visitors and also, you know, benefit our residents. But there are a number of things that such revenue stream could really help the city with. Oftentimes, the city is asked to take on these projects with our limited city funds. And so we are looking and will have quite some discussion at our next city meeting about additional occupancy tax that would be directed for tourism that could help us with a number of those projects. It also caused us to think a little bit about short-term rental policy. And so I know we've thought about that in our ordinance and different things. We do have some provisions in there already. Folks may not be quite aware of them. But we have things that are in there for tourist cabin, for example. And that may come back in some way to the Planning Commission to look at the zoning ordinance and make sure that we've got definitions and things that are suitable that would be able to also fit in nicely with any ordinance or policy that we may implement relevant to an occupancy tax. Those short-term rentals are something that we probably didn't really have a lot of visibility on previous to that. So that's something that I want to make you all aware of and y'all can continue to follow that. We also were informed that our FY '26 budget has been approved by the Comptroller's Office. So that's a good thing. We had some discussion about what the requirements are to post agendas, print agendas, provide meeting materials for our citizens. And so we clarified that with the State Comptroller's Office, what the requirements are. Y'all will remember that even before it was a requirement, the Planning Commission was actually the first one to start posting their agendas online in advance of the meeting. And then subsequent to that, the City Council started doing that. So we do do that to make sure our citizens are well informed about what we're going to discuss. We have to make sure that whatever's written on those agendas, you know, is adequate to describe what we're going to discuss. And so we're always trying to refine that. But there is no requirement to actually print the agendas. So we can do that. And we make them available, as y'all know, to the best that we can. But it's not a requirement. So it's important that we know, you know, what is required and what is something that we can do on top of that. And being resource constrained, sometimes we can't do everything that we like to do. We're not as well-resourced as the county or something like that. But we do our very best and I think we do a good job. Certainly, we meet all the requirements as the State Comptroller's Office described to us. And so we're meeting all that. We also talked about requirements for, you know, having people sign up to speak. And that's okay, too. There is a section of the Tennessee Code annotated that authorizes us to do that. That's just a way that helps make sure that everybody that wants to be heard can be heard. And so we try to do that and always looking at that policy to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak, that commissioners have an opportunity to get their work done. And so we clarified that. We also talked about a workshop, joint workshop, and this might be something the Planning Commission might want to join as well, but a workshop to talk with TDOT about the license agreement for the right of way. So we all know, Planning Commission knows very well, that the city has a license agreement with TDOT for parts of the right of way. TDOT has been working for several years to be able to allow property owners to buy back additional property. And so they sort of concluded that process. And at this point, we are looking to update our license agreement. We've had some discussion about the tunnels and what the, you know, who's responsible for the tunnels and things like that. And so we have talked about that in our City Council meeting. And it was brought up that we'll have a little workshop with TDOT so that commissioners can ask all their questions about the license agreement. Having an agreement is not new. But of course, what's in that is important that everybody understands. Because the right of way really is important. That's, you know, our city is long and skinny. And so that right of way is really the base of our city. Somebody comes and drives up into the park. They drive through Townsend. They see the fertile green buckers zone. And that's important for us to be able to manage. And I know we'll talk a little bit more about that tonight. But part of that oversight and management is having this right of way agreement with TDOT. And that's what enables the city to take enforcement actions and things that TDOT's not really equipped to do enforcement on every little bit of the right of way that they have. But we can do that if we have an arrangement with them. So stand by for that and y'all will be welcome to attend that meeting when it happens. We'll try to make sure that you become aware and we get that scheduled. I told you it was a long meeting. Chief Conde reported that everything was going all right in the city and said that we're getting ready, as we are, for two of our larger events. The Hot Air Balloon Festival that will be happening this weekend and then the Jeep event that will happen the following weekend. And so I think everything is all set for those events in town. So we're anticipating, looking forward to those. Other items of interest, we had some discussion. Commissioner Martin and Jason Jones talked to us about striking of the roads. As you all know, TDOT's been doing a big project up here. They completed the sidewalk side with the, improving the access over the driveways, rumble strips and stuff. I talked to Mr. Harry Cowan to use my monitor on that because he rides his machine up and down the sidewalk side and he gives a good report on that. So that's been completed. And the road striking, I think, is still continuing. But they've been doing a lot of it. I think it looks a whole lot better and it's quite visible as well. There has been some work with Sevier County Electric on the streetlights. They had disconnected some of those. And so Commissioner Jenkins brought that to our attention. And so we're going to follow up on that. And I'll just remind the Planning Commission that Sevier County Electric, if you recall, they came and talked to us about how they're replacing all the power poles. And that is part of a project to connect the Townsend Substation to the Heritage Substation so that we'll have redundancy in our electric system. If it goes off somewhere in Mears Valley, we can potentially pull from the other side or vice versa. And so that's a real good project. That those power poles, I think they look real nice. They're about 10 foot taller than the wooden poles. Wooden poles will most of the gold length. But one thing that I've reminded folks of is that those poles are going to go up all through the curves, so through Hatcher's Cup. And when they do that, there will be some trees that will be taken down. And you all will probably hear about it and will hear about it. We've had a session where they've come and talked to us about it. But I think we want to remind, you know, our residents, we've gotten a lot of questions about what's been happening through there with the water line. And I'll just underscore it. It's a water line. It's not water and sewer. It's a water line going through there. But there will be more work that'll be going through there. And eventually, the road will be repaid through there as well. But that's all work with Alco and Sevier County Electric. Mr. Blair was at a conference, but we had a report from him. And at that time of our meeting, he'll update if needed. Thirty-one open building permits, three certificates of occupancy issued and a report that Tremont Lodge had completed all their renovations. And Mr. Ogle gave a report on the code side talking about some signs and flashing lights that he'd been addressing. We had a recreation report. There's quite a lot going on with the CDC group that is, y'all will probably put out our FAQ and select the CDC to help us design the update of the special people's part. And so that work is continuing to progress. Commissioner Satterfield is providing some good leadership on that. And it's going to be expensive. But the first step is trying to get it designed. And y'all are welcome to engage. And I hope you're following that process as well. But that would be an example of the kind of things if we had a little bit of extra revenue through occupancy tax that we could put toward that. Let's see, what else did we do? And then we did talk as an item that was added to our agenda by Commissioner Hedrick about adding back residences into B1. And I know that's on our agenda tonight. But then we did spend some time talking about that at our commission meeting as well. So there's a report out, Chairman. Sorry to take you long. It was a long meeting that we had, but an important meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mayor. That was quite a bit. Are there any questions for the mayor regarding the report from the Board of Commissioners? Did you say that you're going to contact the Sevier County Electric about the light replacement? Have we spoken with them about putting in any additional lights that face the street or intersections or various of that?
I'm not aware. I checked with Mr. Martin, but I don't know if you've had any, no additional discussion so far.
I was just thinking. I've heard some folks in the community that still like to see some of the street entrances maybe a bit of lit and with the light poles going in and maybe have opportunity, apartments of Sevier County that have that happen, so.
Those new LED lights, I will say, they are quite a bit brighter. And so I think, you know, where you need light, they're awful bright. And where you don't need light, you want to be thoughtful, I think, like that. But we can follow up with Sevier County Electric. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments for the mayor?
We also need to remember dark skies. This is a place that you still have that and once it's called, it's called.
That's true. Thanks, I think. Okay, moving on. Do we have anybody that's signed up for public input? Give her.
Becky Hedrick. I'm Becky Hedrick. First want to say I really need the president's back in B1 district. So bringing that this month, that would be great. And this is to speak on Mr. Aker's agenda. People used to park campers on their property before it was allowed in the city zoning regulations. Some of those people knew it wasn't permitted and did so anyway. Then the regulations were changed to allow campers to be stored in someone's property 24/7, 365 days a year. Several campgrounds has been established in the past few years because a campground wasn't acceptable land use in the city zoning regulations. One can't say kind of want to look at a camper because they are allowed to be stored and occupied within the city limits. Mr. Aker has been honest and upfront with his intentions. He changed the property's zone to the B2 in order to allow for a home/business to be built so that he can store his camper on the property. He asked his neighbors if they could be opposed to him camping and they signed a petition in favor of allowing him to camp. He's currently the only B2 zone property within the city limits. So any regulation changes would not affect any other properties. Living in a camper is not permitted in the city zoning regulations. However, there are some people that have been living in a camper yet no one has said anything about that. To allow someone to live in a camper on their property and not allow someone else to camp on theirs is kind of hard to understand. As did you consider updating the regulation to allow camping in the B2 zoning districts?
Thank you, Becky.
Ma?
Thank you. My paper, 7511, Cold Highway 73. I wanted to comment first of all about putting the residence, single-family dwellings, back in B1. It's the right thing to do since the vast majority of the B1 district as it currently exists is single-family dwellings. It caused me to jump through a bunch of hoops because I couldn't build the structure that I built in B1 under the current rule. I built the structure to comply with the ordinance that's called an RV exemption, which makes it perfectly legal for me to park and store my RV on my property anytime I want, for as long as I want, in perpetuity. The reason that I built my house 14 feet off the ground is so I can park the RV under the house in the drop. And realistically, from any perspective, driving by, floating by in the river, walking by, visiting the pub, every appearance and sound from the motorhome would be identical, whether I was spending the night in it or it's just parked and stored there. So I urge you all to seriously consider doing the right thing and letting me stay recreationally in the same motorhome that's going to be parked there anyway. It has been voiced in more than one meeting that people don't want to see additional RVs in Townsend, but this has no factor in that whatsoever. It's already legally permitted to be parked there. I believe that ordinance came on in 2018. It's not anything new. And it is the reason why there's a house there now, to get the exemption to park there. We have recently brought on new RV parks that are bringing big numbers of RVs into Townsend. And they were in the B1 zone, which prohibits, which it is not a permitted use for RVs in the zoning regulations as published. So a special variance was issued to one and the other one may have been legal when it happened, but it isn't permitted now. All of those people that come to stay there are going to be spending the night in an RV in the B1 district where I was before I had to change districts in order to build the house, in order to even be able to park there. I urge you to try to come up with a valid reason to say no other than it's because we said so. Because we said so is a ruling over the citizens rather than a representation of the citizens. All of my makers have signed a sworn affidavit that's in front of you, joining my plight for this amendment to allow me to camp in my motorhome because they know that there's no difference in what they will see or hear whether I'm residing in it as a camper, adventure, or law.
That's it, the three minutes is up.
Sure.
Thank you for your comments.
Henry Myers.
Henry Myers, out of the city, that guy. I had noticed. Now, man, would you please keep that to... Say your fathers and mothers here if they want anything to get. You should be ashamed of yourself. I knew your daddy, I knew your grandfather.
Sir, don't talk about my family in this public meeting.
Okay.
Just keep it out. If you ever talk, you can talk outside.
Okay, there's some fine people around here that really would dust your children's pants if they did that in the record. I think you're unfair. And we get what we want. The hell damn idea is part of my life. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Wendy.
I see. Is there anyone else that has a comment? Is there? Ma'am? If you would just say your name, let me know.
My name is Erin Adderton. I'm the current owner of the Little River Public Building. I want to bring something to your attention about the documents that were submitted. They were notarized, but the notary was not actually present until the documents were signed. Under the Tennessee law, a notary has to witness the signature in person or have the signer appear before them to acknowledge it. Since that didn't happen here, the notarization is invalid, which means the documents are not legally acceptable as they stand. I also want to note that this isn't just a technicality. This is a Tennessee law that the notary who notarizes the document without the signer being present can face disciplinary action, removal of office, civil liability, and criminal penalties for false certifications. This underscores why the law is strict in compliance. I have the laws. Under Tennessee Code 816-120, the government may remove the notary from office for misconduct. Under 816-123, a notary may be liable for damages caused by improper notarization. In serious cases, criminal charges could be filed against the notary. There wasn't a notary present when I signed the document nor was they worthy present when my husband signed. This isn't about whether Mr. Aker can or cannot sleep in his RV. That's for the laws of Mr. Aker to figure out. My issue is he provided you with the document that is not legally binding to us.
Okay, thank you very much, Chairman. Appreciate that. Okay, is anyone else here for public input? Okay, the public input is closed at this time. And before we get into new business, I would like to welcome our newest member of the Planning Commission, Mr. Harry McIntosh. He was appointed by the mayor a couple months ago. But this is his first chance to join the meeting. So we'd like to welcome him. I think he'll be a fine addition to the board. I'll work with you in other areas where leadership might. And I know that you're a community leader and I believe you do an outstanding job. So if you would, everybody just please welcome Harry. All right, moving on to new business. Item number one, we have the zoning designation B1. A review and discussion of definition and permitted uses. Okay, and also I believe Commissioner Hedrick, one of the permitted uses specifically that was suggested was to put the R1 single-family residence as the permitted use back into the B1 district. And it looks like we have some language that has been drafted for our consideration. And it appears as though it's a copy of our B1 tourist business district regulation as it stands currently in our zoning book with the addition under item number one, item A, single-family residences except mobile homes.
What?
Single-family residences except mobile homes is the suggested language to be added. I believe the council had some discussion about this. And it was brought up. There was some concern that we do have several residences that are in B1. They've been in B1 for the inception of the zoning. But the concern is that if one of those houses were to be destroyed, would there be provision or a way for it to be reconstructed? Am I correct?
That's correct.
You have anything else to add?
Well, at the Commissioners' meeting, I committed to have laser focus on getting it in this, get it, single-family residence added back to B1 like it was five years ago. It was there. You and I were involved when it was put there. So I took the wording from B2, copied it, and put it in B1. No additional changes, just that wording. Because I don't want to get bogged down in a big discussion about, well, we changed the wording. We'll do this. Because I plan on, at the City Commission meeting, having a first reading of the diswordings.
I question if residences in B1 is really the best, good approach to start off with. I'd like to kind of have a discussion about that at some point in time. And also, if the concern is to provide provision for a previously existing home to be reconstructed, could we write the language similarly to reflect that desire? In that, that single-family dwellings or homes could be permitted if they were already established within a certain timeline or something? Would that be consideration?
Well, we have to eliminate some wording that's already in there because it says that more than 50% damage has to be built back for current building and zoning rules. So if half the house burns down, you're out of luck. So there's more than just, you know, it's more of a complex thing. The other part is we're trying to promote as much single-family residence in town as we possibly can. We don't want to make it complicated for people to do that. And it wasn't complicated when we had it in there originally. But when the B1, B2, B3 ordinance was conceived, that wording got eliminated. It was originally in there for B1.
Yeah, and Mayor, you may...
You know, I'm happy to recount a little bit about how that discussion went, Chairman. I think it's part of what you're exploring here. As when we did add the B3, we took a look at what was in already in B1. So if y'all recognize, most of the high-intensity uses that were in B1 that were not related to tourist business district were moved into B3. It's not that those uses didn't already exist before. It's just that they were moved into B3 in recognition of a high-intensity use district. And I think the Planning Commission recommended it and the Board of Commissioners agreed with that as well because we adopted the new B3. When we did that, we had to reduce some things out of B1. I don't think we really changed B2 much. But one of the things that did get discussed and reduced, and it was intentional, was taking residences out of B1. So I want to recall that it was intentional. It wasn't an oversight that residents were taken out of B1. It was intentional. And part of the rationale was that there's a difference between residence and business. And so, you know, when you're trying to organize your, you know... And so, you know, when you're trying to organize your, you know, different types of uses in a community, business uses are fundamentally different than residential uses. And I think for that reason, in coordination with the city planner, who was giving us advice at that time, we did think about, and we did take out the business uses now. The fact is that we still have many residences in B1. And I try to remind people, when you drive up and down the road in Townsend, you see these, you know, pre-open lots and things like that, but a lot of these are zoning business, and people forget that. But there will come a time when somebody buys that lot, and they will want to put a business on it because it's zoning business. And if you're living next to a business, you need to sort of know what you're getting into. And if you have a home that's in a business district, well, you're in a business district. And you may be surrounded by open lots, but the fact is, you're surrounded by lots that could someday be a business. And so, this was part of the discussion, that most communities, I think, if I recall, City Planner can correct me if this is not right, but a lot of communities, at least, you know, fundamentally have this distinction, and you don't see residences necessarily in the business district. That's one of the things that sort of distinguishes resident, residential district from business district. Now, I've had a little bit of time to think about it since then, and I've had a number of citizens come to me, and the situation that they are afraid of, as Commissioner Jennings highlights, is the fact, hey, I live in a B1, I've lived there since before it was a B1, I've got my house there, will I be, if something happens to my house, will I be able to, you know, build back my house? And we do have things in our code that says, you know, if a certain amount is destroyed, you have to build it back according to the current standards. And there's a reason for that as well. And folks on the Planning Commission know, well, this is how you sort of improve gradually over time, and you bring things from a previous state to a current state with modern, you know, standards and things of that nature. So that's not unusual. But what is a little bit unusual and different is the situation in Townsend, this is what I've come to appreciate. So, Mr. Chairman, I think you're right to raise the point, you know, well, we did this intentionally. Do we want to really undo it at this point? Is there some other way that you could address this situation with being able to build back and, you know, guarantee those people that if you're living in there now, you'd be able to build your house back? And I think that's what I've heard from citizen, Mr. Riddle was here previously, and he gave comments at our city council meeting, so I think he'd be all right if I reminded people of his comments. He's really concerned about that, and he's not the only one who's concerned about that. The second thing I've thought about since then is full-time residents in Townsend. We need people that live here full-time. If we lose this balance with people that live here full-time, it will impact the future of Townsend. Now, there are, there are communities where, for whatever reason, all of a sudden, the real estate goes up and people want to buy for, you know, investments or vacations or part-time. People have had part-time vacation homes in Townsend since as long as I can remember, probably before Hops ever arraigned. But we have to have a balance, and the land use and transportation policies that we're talking about in the community plan are things that try to encourage full-time residents here in Townsend. And that's important, because we don't want to lose that balance. We can have a little bit of, you know, everything, but if you lose that balance, it is very hard to get it back, because then the majority of your community doesn't live here, they're not interested in the same thing as people that live here. And so, I'm a little bit persuaded about putting residences back in B1, or the fact that it would potentially help encourage people who live full-time in these. And given the amount of B1 properties, if somebody wanted to come and buy one of these B1 properties, we've got it up and down the road and wanted to live in there full-time and be part of our community, I don't know that I want to have, you know, a barrier to that necessarily. Now, they would have to know, okay, I'm buying a house, I'm going to live in it, it's going to be in a business, my neighbor at any given time on this open lot could decide to put a business in there, that's his property right. And we've had a lot of discussions over the last year about property rights, and we do respect property rights here in the city of Townsend. People have a right to use to the full extent that they are permitted to develop their property in a way that's allowed. But, you know, I said at our last city council meeting that I support this, putting this back in B1. I think the chairman, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, is right to set this, pause this a little bit and say, let's be sure we think about this, you know, is there another way to do it? Look, this is an expedition's way, just go ahead and put it back in there. But later down the line, somebody's going to move into one of these places and live in it, and then they're going to get all huffy, and somebody wants to put a business as is their right to do, right in store to them. So we just have to recognize that.
Don't like it.
But, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, before we do a knee-jerk reaction on anything and appreciate the mayor's position, he's refought, give consideration of what happened last night. Before we, expeditionally make a decision on that, we need to think about this and discuss it a little bit. I don't want to get down another month, two months, and say, well, you know, we should have made parameters on this, we should have given a little bit more thought to this. I would not be in favor of doing this expedition straight tonight, or make a recommendation for it.
Okay, my thought is going off of what you said, all of these houses in B1, and you go and buy a house in B1, and a business comes up next to you. That can happen today. So what would be the difference? And then the other thing is, we approved it, and we had, it was right to approve because it followed our ordinances, but the event center that went across the street from where Bonnie Suddles lived, they bought that with the intent of an event center, and they were told no. So then they did the house, they put the house on tourist. Then they redid the barn in the back, put that on tourist, and now what do they have? An event center in the middle of the neighborhood. So your arguments are, I mean, it's happening, it's already happening with what we have. I agree with, if it was my house sitting there in B1, and it were to burn down, I would want to know that I can, and so would you, that you could rebuild it. So I don't know where the hesitation is, because your arguments are, they're there today.
I can kind of think of some, some other things. Well, we've got down single-family dwellings, we don't have any multifamily dwellings in here as well.
Well, multifamily's not in B1, it's not listed in B1. We're talking about B1, changing B1.
Yeah, I understand what we're talking about, talking about B1. But also, if you had, it could be handled in different ways, where it's just not an open, an open-door policy for any, any single-family residents, you can have the special exceptions in there as well, where I'm just, I'm not sure that just opening it up to single-family dwellings is, is the best approach to achieve the goal of allowing people the ability to rebuild homes. And I do agree that we do need to have more full-time residents in Townsend, and if we're asked to turn into Barcelona, Spain, where there's more transient occupants, whether they're permanent residents, it does create a lot of problems.
But we don't have anything right now to prevent that. Every, every residence can be a tourist cabin, and so we don't have anything to prevent that. So I don't, I mean, the arguments that you have, I understand, but they're, we're already there. And so, putting B1, putting residents back in B1 is not going to create that problem, we aren't able to. So, I'm, I'm for, if I'm just thinking about our citizens worried about their houses burning, being able to rebuild. And I would say to go ahead and approve it as submitted, and then we can always go back and fine-tune it.
One, one thing about the way it's submitted is the.
Can I ask you a question?
No, ma'am, you may not. The exception of mobile homes, that is, we can't have that in there by state laws, state law.
Uh, it's, it's in there now, it's been in there, and I would like to read that state law, because that's been in effect for a long time, it's nothing new. I used to be in the mortgage industry, it was back then.
Oh.
Residential dwelling prohibited exceptions, and this is from TCA, what is that, Tennessee?
Tennessee.
Notwithstanding any provision of the law, to the contrary, no power or authority granted by this code to regulate zoning or land use shall be used to exclude the placement of a residential dwelling on a land designated for residential use, solely because the dwelling is partially or completely constructed in a manufacturing facility. Residential dwelling as used in this part does not apply to manufactured, factory does not apply to factory-manufactured mobile homes. Constructed as a single self-contained unit and mounted on a single chassis, as further defined in, nor shall this chapter have any effect whatsoever upon any zoning or other regulations, whether state or local, concerning such factory-manufactured mobile homes as herein defined. So residential dwelling as used in this part does not apply to factory-manufactured And if that were an issue, we should have changed it a long time ago, I'd like to know the date on that, it's probably been in effect a very long time.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, I, I think City Planner has brought this to our attention, that this is the state law now, and that we might need to, in terms of our zoning ordinance, take this into account, and the next time we update zoning ordinance, because it is the current state law, it's relevant to this discussion.
It is relevant, it's not that that's us.
But, but you got to be careful about the definition. What she read was the exception was the mobile home. We, a lot of people in their mind think about a tiny home being a mobile, and they're not the same thing. So you have to be very clear in the wording, and that's the reason I copied exactly what it says in B2 and put it in B1.
So that's another, that's just another topic that we could have been discussing the last two months, that we didn't meet.
I have one other comment about it I can make.
Yeah, you can, but I was looking through, we have B2 that's printed out here, and I don't see, because it's, that's another thing, too, the formatting between B1 and B2, the way they're written is different. The bullet points is the permitted uses.
Yes, I, I've seen that in the past, and the East Tennessee Development, correct me if I'm wrong, is responsible for updating this, correct?
Planning Commission will update the zoning ordinance. The East Tennessee Development is helping us right now with respect to the land use and transportation plan. This might be one of the things that they recommend that the Planning Commission take a look at.
Who is responsible for updating the document? The document?
You're talking about the zoning ordinance?
The document.
The zoning ordinance is owned by the city of Townsend, and so.
That we don't have access to?
Well, we're, we're working on that, but ultimately, the zoning ordinance is the responsibility of the city of Townsend. We're advised by ETDD on how to update that.
But how can we update it when we don't have the master copy?
Well, we update it through making recommendations that are accepted by the city council, and they go into the book after that. So you're asking who actually types the wording?
Exactly, that is what I'm at, that is what I'm asking.
That may be ETED.
It has to be, because we don't have the documents.
I'm sure we can do that in there.
And after they do that document typing, who checks it and makes sure it's accurate?
I guess it's the responsibility of this body who passes the, the best of the calculations, right?
I mean, that's our work, that's what we have to do as a body. They advise us on the best practices on city planning, they advise us on, here's how the language might up the look, but ultimately, we have to adopt it as a change to the zoning ordinance.
So basically, are they responsible for updating the document? I mean, would you be paid then to do that?
No, well, no, the, the document, the changes to what goes in the document is the responsibility of the city, the Planning Commission.
But I'm talking about literally typing. Who does the typing?
Well, we can type, just like we have in ordinance here, proposed ordinance. So this was not typed by ETDD, this was typed, I think, by city staff. So I don't want to get wrapped up on who does the typing.
No, I do, because we, as was just brought up, this says this and that says that. I want to know who.
You're suggesting in the past that, that things have been mistranscribed in our.
No, you, you just brought up that B1 looks like this, and B2 looks like this, and so that was my question, who types it?
I don't know who typed this, because this is well before my.
Who's responsible?
My 16 years on this board, this was well before this, and if we get down brass tacks, it'll be ETED would be responsible.
Exactly.
And it'd be responsible for us to proofread it when the documents come back to us in their bound form, so I don't know why we're really discussing this right now.
Because my, you were bringing up the differences, and my question was, who types it? And it's ETED, that's what I thought, that's what I thought.
Okay, let's get back on track here, let's get on track. We're talking about looking at the B1 district, not who types our documents. My, my first thought when I saw this come through, I said, well, with the residences back into B1, what's the difference between B1 and B2?
Lit work. Lit work.
Yeah, there's, there's some significant differences. In, in B2, we have the provision for single-family or multifamily, as long as they're underneath one roof, and it is a lit-work residence, in that either the owner or an employee directly associated with the business resides the building. Also, it's, what was it, a minimum or a maximum of 4,000 square feet? I think that was another revision, that too. So at this point, I'm, I'm thinking, there's not a whole lot of, we're not going to have a lot of difference between B1 and B2 going forward, so why not try to just go ahead and revamp the B1, B2, and B3, which I still contend the B3 is an unusable zone. It's, it's a, it needs to be relooked at and redone. So to that, what Mr. Lindsey said, as far as this knee-jerk reaction maybe isn't the best approach for us in doing this, maybe having a lengthier discussion with the city council as well as to their intent, and come to an understanding, and maybe we need to change, it drives me crazy, the format's not the same in B2 and B1. You have, you have specifics in B2 that say you can permit this and you can't permit that, but they're not in the bullet points down below. And it's a good chance for us to sit down and look at all three of these Bs, and see if we cannot make them more streamlined, make them more user-friendly, and also incorporate the, the differences between the two, not in maybe so many different zones, but in one zone that has special exceptions that can be acted upon, just like we already have in B3, and we have in the M1, and some other zones. So maybe a more comprehensive look, and that's what I, I would suggest right now.
My hesitation to that is, the, the people living in B1, this can has been kicked down the road for months and months and months, and they are concerned. I would be concerned as well. Why can't we vote on this today, do it today, and then do whatever you're talking about, and we can massage it and make it better? But as the, the arguments that I have heard tonight are valid arguments, but they're arguments that are always there. I mean, doing this is not going to make it better or worse. The only thing it's going to do is allow someone to rebuild their home, that's it.
I have a comment. I, I think we should, you know, rebuild the homes. If, I would, I would do this as a non-conforming use with the zoning. And I do have the benefit of a new era, and it seems you have commercial zoning in B1, there's a mixed-use zoning, while it's a little unclear, it allows commercial, lighter commercial and residential use, and then the higher intensity, but it seems to me like if you're, if you just put residential zoning in commercial. but it seems to me like if you're, if, if you just put residential zoning in commercial, you're not using your zoning, it's, it's undermining the zoning process. You're mixing uses and, and not having much difference between B1 and B2. It's, it seems like there should be a mechanism for people to rebuild their homes, if there was a desire for someone to build a, in a commercial district, they should be able to rezonate to B2 for residential use, use the zoning instead of changing the zoning.
Nope.
No? Okay. Um, it, it, it doesn't seem, I, it doesn't seem appropriate to me if you have a commercial district to have residential use because they're incompatible with each other.
No, we already have it.
You, you do, but you should have, you should use, you know, there's one, there's one B2, as far as I know, there's been one B2 request. If, if somebody, have an mechanism for someone to rebuild, but also have a, if we're encouraging people to live where it's B1 now, allow them to rezonate to B2, and encourage it that way. Don't, don't put any use in your commercial zoning that's incompatible.
Well, if, to, if you're going to rebuild your home and you have to rezonate to B2, that's good work, and they, they just live there, they don't work there.
I'm saying, well, you, you could, you could allow a B1 for a rebuild, but not a new build. If it's a new build, rezonate to B2, build your house. So now, it's unclear to me whether B2 allows strictly single-family and residential, because I think that's what's going on in the only properties open that night, it's not red for it, and it says it, it says single-family in the description, which is, is a mistake. That needs to be fixed. But I say face that, let people rebuild, if they're in B1, let them rebuild, if they, if it's vacant lot, they can rezonate it to B2, if, if the board thinks it's a good idea, and it seems like this board doesn't want to encourage it.
Right, I'm just talking about today, because this, these discussions can go on for years, and we're just kicking this down the road. So act on it and go back and fix it.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, please. Yeah, I, I, you know, it is a little bit of a dilemma, it's a good discussion to have. Commissioner McIntosh brings up the fundamental point of planning is you need to have some distinction. If you can have everything in every zone, then you don't have any zone, if everything is permissible in every zone. And I think what we were trying to do when we added the B3 and we took the residences out of B1, was to take a step toward making these build distinctions. If somebody goes and buys one of these properties tomorrow, which could very well happen, they could decide, I'm going to live in this house or I'm going to build a house on there.
Or can start a business, right now.
So, but it does, but I am persuaded a little bit by the point that it does take time to have these discussions. And so I think we did make progress when we made a third zon, business zone type. I think it is right to put those, um, high-intensity uses in a different zone. I, I, I hold a different opinion than the chairman, that I have great respect for, but I do hold a different opinion on that, I think there is a, a real reason to have those high-intensity uses, that's what we heard from our citizens, that those things need to have closer look. But I do think, you know, as we continue to update and improve this, the more comprehensive look across the B1, 2, and 3 is probably necessary, but that will take some time. I also, you know, with Commissioner McIntosh agree that there's a way, you could have a non-conforming use approved, you could have, um, you could have, um, a request of variance through the VZA, there's mechanisms to allow people to build back the houses, and I don't think anybody would prevent that from happening. But it doesn't get it very much solace, you know, uh, if, if, it, you know, if it's not assertive, you know, if you have to jump through all these hoops. And for the reason to make sure we got, you know, as many opportunities to have full-time residents as possible, so I'm, I hate to do things that are in the short run, you know, more expeditious and not really take up the, the long-term effort that we need, but I am a little bit persuaded by that. You know, we, we need to do both, we need to have something, you know, in the short term that covers people, but we also need to take this up in a longer way. Part of what we're doing through the community plan and updating our Land Use and Transportation Plan is really trying to get the right, the business in the right place. I'm not sure that if you look at the map of Townsend, that, that all the businesses in the right place and all the residential's in the right place. And so that's something that we will be able to address, you know, through the community plan. But, um, I'll just say, Mr. Chairman, I think for my own opinion, this might be a time, and I might be willing to entertain a more expeditious, uh, session, you know, I, I'm still, I think of mine, or I would probably go ahead and put it back in B1, but also recall this discussion, we're fortunate, we're going to be able to watch it on YouTube. But we do need to take the longer approach, it is something that's necessary to ensure that Townsend ends up the way that, you know, our citizens want it to end up.
This is a new request, Jeff Riddles stood up here in January and asked that, have this reviewed and approved, and it's now a month, a month.
The Planning Commission meeting?
He stood at that microphone at the, at the City Commission meeting and requested.
I wasn't at the City Commission meeting, and this wasn't related to me until just last month.
Okay.
When we canceled the meeting, this question, he has something to discuss, and I didn't know that this was something the council had discussed in their meetings, so.
Yeah, my, my, my sense of the council is the council as well into act on this. I tried to encourage him, I said, now, let's go through the, the process, let's get a read on this from the Planning Commission, and, uh, but I think the City Council is ready to, to take action on this at the next meeting.
I understand now that you guys have had this on your radar for several months.
That's right.
It showed up for us last month, and in the consideration, I saw a lot of other things that could be.
So save us and pass it. Save us, pass it, so we can tell Jeff he's got it.
Well, um, you know, this is a board meeting, we're welcome to make motions, call votes.
Oh, Kim had, Kim had a. The language with the mobile homes, there's something that should be used with caution. I think what you have to be homing enough is that the law says that any manufactured home should not be discriminated against, construction, so whether it's a mobile home or whatever else, the key idea is that it was manufactured, as the law has said. Now, as I presented several months ago, I said, one of the reasons which you could require a mobile home to not be discriminated against in a residential area is to request or require it have clear construction. So I gave a sample ordinance that Cambridge has had, that says that you can put a mobile home up, but it has to be basically rooted into the property. That means for the part of the bed where it should be altered and made merry, and also maybe a skirt put around it, so it doesn't look like a mobile home. But the fact that it's a manufactured home gives it every right to exist in a residential area, that's the basic.
Can I ask your opinion on, you, you do this for other cities, correct?
Yeah.
Is, is it typical in any of your other cities to allow single-family in commercial zoning?
Well, there is a concept or an idea or a practice, right? You try to find zones that are transitional. So you might not necessarily have a transition zone, but for example, in some cities, what they do is that, instead of having simply a commercial zone, they have what they call a professional zone. So a professional zone, doctor's office, a vet's office, if the vet doesn't keep too many animals overnight, um, a dentist's office, those sort of things. So sometimes those are allowed in residential areas because some of those type of structures, like a residence of home, might be conducive for a doctor to have a practice out of it, or whatever. So in some areas, they do have what they call a professional zone, in those, they allow residences with the idea that they may share similar structures.
Sounds kind of like our B2.
Yeah, whatever you choose to, to be your B2 is what I would suggest that you discuss in a workshop. And then whether you want to keep it simply from the caveat that it be the work, live work, or you want to consider multifamily or whatever, so that's where you have to decide that. Are you just allowing single-family residences, or you are allowing a spectrum of housing or residences in the D2, because it lends itself to it being a more high-intensity area, than, let's say, a single-family district? So that is a discussion you should have, whether it should be a part of your delivery work.
So just so I'm clear, would, would it not be normal to have single-family in a commercial district?
It is not unusual, because the thing that one has to understand is that a combination of uses is not the big problem. The combination of uses actually is something that I think it shouldn't be frowned upon. There are many cities around the world, in Europe, wherever else, where their combination of uses right in the same district. The let must test is to make sure that there's no adverse impact of either one against the other. So in and of itself, the planning notion that you should segregate uses is not automatic, so.
Okay. We kind of got ahead of ourselves, I realize we just had lengthy discussion before we even had a motion to discuss, I apologize about that. I was eager to get into this, but surely it would have been motion, do we want to go through the motions now?
Is there any way that I could ask you all?
No way.
Okay.
Not at this time. So we had discussion before motions.
Okay. Mike, I'll make a motion that we add single-family residences, except mobile homes, we can discuss that, to B1, as shown in this proposed ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion to a second.
Second.
Okay, all right, let's continue with some discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, but.
Well, we're better than accept mobile homes, and we're not already, it's not legal.
Even if you read what he just passed.
What?
Read what he just passed.
Read what he said.
The second paragraph, the first sentence of the, of the second paragraph.
If I could, I'd like to see if the motion in the second would accept an amendment to add single-family homes and strike the words except mobile homes.
There's a difference between mobile homes and manufactured homes. Mobile homes are usually on wheels.
Do you accept?
So if I amend my motion, we're going to amend it, that's okay, Chairman? I'm going to amend it to say we'll add single-family residences as shown, as modified.
Okay.
Drop the words except mobile homes.
The motion has been amended to remove except mobile homes, so item A under line one will just say single-family residences. Correct. So we have an amended, um, motion. Uh, do we have a, the second on that amended motion?
Hold on.
You, okay, we have a motion in the second, okay, we can further discuss on the amended, on the amended proposal. Any further discussion? Any? Okay, all right, no more discussion?
Well, Mike, I, let me remind you, if we add this to the ordinance, it's just advisory, it's up to the City Council to have two readings to pass it. So everybody, the public will have a chance to critique it and comment on it at the City Council meetings.
I, I'd just like to say normally, this isn't the way that I like to, to, to do things, but there are some, uh, some pre-existing circumstances that make this unique, and, uh, in that we did allow residences in B1 prior, and we do have, we have several residences in B1 from right now, and this would alleviate the concern of those homeowners, uh, for the, for the meantime. However, I also do still contend that we've got a lot of language to clear up, a lot of clarification, and a lot of distinction between these zones that needs to be addressed. So, um, that's all my discussion on this matter, anyone else have any questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would just echo your comments, I think you fought on.
And just when, um, they were talking about, uh, homes and mixing homes and business, when I think about downtown Maryville, you have lots. When I think about downtown New Orleans, you've got all those little things tied, so it is a common thing to mix business and homes, especially if they're residence.
It is.
Yeah, I think that's what the, the B2 is designed to do.
Okay, any other comments?
Um, I guess I'll say, uh, I would hope that this didn't, uh, doesn't make it where we won't work on those other things, that this is a patch, and now we're just going to forget about the changes. I, I can get behind this if, uh, if we make the commitment to explore using, fixing our other zoning districts. That's all.
All right, anything else? All right, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the amended ordinance number, excuse me, 348-25-1P, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
All right, the ordinance, and I'm sorry, I'm taking it back on my mayor days, this, this is a recommendation to, to, uh, to the City Council of the ordinance number, uh, 38, 348-25-1P. And that's taken care of number one, now we have number two on the new business, the B2 Residence Allowance petitioner, Mr. Aker. If you'd like to just introduce this briefly again for us, Mr. Aker.
First of all, I would like to apologize for the notary seal being applied inappropriately, I was following directions from an honorary. I didn't intend to mislead anyone. I am asking to be able to recreationally stay in my mother home that I'm allowed, according to Townsend's existing ordinance, is to park there anytime I want. The verbiage that I prepared for this was camping for recreational stay in one's own RV on one's own property is permitted in the B2 zone in accordance with the RV parking slash storage exemption found in Townsend's municipal code, ordinance 297-18-1P. Links of recreational stay camping in an RV on properties already having a residential principal building under the existing City of Townsend's own regulations and municipal ordinance 297-18-1P is unlimited as a result of the RV already being permitted to be parked slash stored on the property at all times. Permanent residence in having an RV is prohibited in the B2 zone.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, would anyone like to move to, to pass this recommendation? I'll make the motion, so we can have some discussion on it. Do that second. One second. Okay, motion and second for the recommendation from Mr. Aker.
Mr. Chairman, I thought, uh, it wasn't discordant with the City Council prior, and members served to correct, maybe, they turned that?
I believe at that time, it was a recommendation from the council member to have this addressed by the City Council, I mean, by the, by the Planning Commission, at which time the City Council members did not pass the recommendation, to recommend it for us to recommend back to them. To recommend it for us to recommend back to them.
I'm of the opinion that our residential zones are for residences. I'm of the opinion our campgrounds are for camping. The state of Tennessee doesn't recognize an RV as being a residence, not suitable for, for continual habitation. And I think that we have areas in the city of Townsend to accommodate camping. So I don't see a real hardship as far as not being able to camp in Townsend. We have areas for that. And one of my concerns as well is to protect other residential property owners and their rights in that, they don't have folks camping next to their permanent residence they invested time and money in. Because, let's face it, sometimes camping is, is a messier, uh, form of recreating than, than other ones that, that, uh, led to the body to put campgrounds into a high intensity use to begin with. So, um, and the fact that the city council refused to pass the recommendation to the planning commission, I don't think that they want to see it again anyway, because they didn't even ask us to look at it. So in my mind, this being on the agenda was a moot point from the very beginning. That's why we didn't have any action items and the meeting wasn't called last month, because I deemed this to be inactionable or that the action was already taken by the city council and that they didn't even want to recommend it to us even consider. So that's my comments regarding the request.
I would tend to agree with you because what about all the other residences in Townsend? I know, again, putting myself in their shoes, I would not want someone pulling up next to my home and camping. And we do have an ordinance that has been, when I was on the planning commission prior, you couldn't even have a camper in your yard, and that has changed. And they, and they enforced that. If you had a camper in your yard for a little bit, they were knocking on your door. So they changed that to be more accommodating, so you can allow campers at your home now. So pushing this one more step, it just opens up. It does not follow our ordinance, and I don't think it represents the, the majority of the citizens of Townsend.
Any other discussion?
Chairman, ma'am. Say something, please, sir. Mr. Aker, I appreciate very much your technology. The, uh, notaries were not true. I did, my first cut is I looked at it and said, there's something wrong with this. So I went in my corporate attorney, I flipped this, and I was made inquiries and found out that, uh, the notary wasn't there. So I thought, well, maybe something has changed since COVID. So I had him call the state and validate down there. And what bothered me a whole lot about it is that this was presented and this notary works for you. And you're a, what county county? And this notary is a Blount County official and that he's a W4 county. And to do this really bothered, and I rattled through them a little bit. I said, I don't, I don't understand this. I had a little bit of sympathy at first, but then this bothered probably a problem. And I'll tell you one other one that bothers me a little bit is impunity maligning some of the, the officials in the city. Bothered me a little bit. I am not a social media person. I, I don't read them. I'm more academic than I am a comedian. I, there's two types, there's truth and there's absolute truth. And if you don't know the difference, but you ask me, I'll tell you that. This, when you first presented this several months ago, that's probably, I know some of the situations you're talking about. But the problem is, I don't think you know. We go back, Mike and I have been on this board for a long time. Going back building inspectors, two, three years. Things were happening back then that we turned down in planning mission, and we turned down some of them. But other little entities made it possible, now we've, we've addressed that on fines, a few other things. There are some things that I think you need to research. I think you got, you got a way of going, but it rubs a little bit. I want you to, if you, if you got a problem with something, address it with the, in the proper channels. And not so much on the social media, because it rubs a few people on and then they start coddling.
I have three minutes, sir. You'll get, you'll get me three minutes.
Yes, sir.
That's very difficult to do.
Yes. That's basically what I asked. I have a problem with some things and I wanted to come extract that I had and why I had, and he knows. He brought it around, he knows.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the, um, on the motion, um, I would echo the comments of other commissioners. Um, I don't think this is what the citizens of Townsend want. I think there's significant problems with allowing somebody to camp in a motorhome. Um, I think that there's a reason why other cities and communities, you can't do this. And we're not unique in this. There are significant problems for our residents. I don't think, you know, I would just echo the, uh, the comments of other commissioners. I will just say that I have some concern that we're even entertaining this based on what was presented to us about the notary. If an attorney was to provide documentation to the city of Townsend that is false and misleading, I have a problem with that. If a petitioner that comes before this board or any other board of the city of Townsend misrepresents, falsifies documentation, I have a problem with that. And I think this is something that we'll need to look into.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. I'll call for a vote. Those who would like to pass this recommendation on the city council, reply aye. Those opposed?
Opposed.
Y'all still want to identify yourselves?
So it's unanimously opposed.
No, no.
Ma'am?
Would you all identify yourselves?
Ma'am, please keep it down, please.
I'm not, I'm not going to talk.
All right. Item number three under new business, uh, we have a single-family dwelling use form. Uh, this form was, uh, recommended to us by, uh, by Doug. And if you would, you want to come up and just give a little bit of a short review of this form?
Sure, yeah, this is.
What this is and what the intent is and what a useful tool this may be to the city.
Yeah. The, uh, single-family use form is a form that anybody who wants to pull a building permit would have to sign and have notedized to say that what you're doing to the property is for residential use only. So if I bought, bought it by the rear rent and was going to rent it, the state requires for insurance purposes that that rental property have to have sprinklers in. This is stating that you're going to use your property for what you say it is. All it does is, it doesn't eliminate anybody from building or hinder anybody from doing that. The only thing is to protect us as a city by saying this house that you're using as a house, we're now going to use it as a rental. And you decide that on the front end. If you read through that document, it states what the use is. Blount County has one, North County has one, Southern County has one, all the local municipalities have one. We're the only ones that don't. And the building inspector in Blount County, uh, was a little bit disgruntled, I guess, that we didn't have one. And really all it does is whoever buys their water, whatever, they have to tell us through the notary that what they're doing on the property is what they're going to be using. If it's a rental property, then we would require a sprinkler system.
Okay.
I have a question about this.
Please.
So if, if it's intended for overnight rental, does that trigger the fire sprinklers or the 5,000 square feet, three or more stories, or 13 or more?
And or, it would be, either, either, any of those boxes would check. If you're going to be 5,000 square feet, four, you're going to use a sprinkler system.
Okay. So any overnight rental
Correct.
will be, will need to be sprinkled?
Yes. So if you bought, if you bought a lot on the rear of you and you were going to build a two-bedroom house and you wanted to do that as rental property, RBO or whatever, you would be telling us as a city upfront, I'm using this as a rental property. We would therefore require you to have it sprinkled.
Is there a, how do you know when something is a rental? Is there a permanent price or?
I don't, that's the, that right there, what this.
Like an existing? If, if someone has a house now and they decide they want to rent it, would this apply?
No. It's only new stuff. Now, if you have a house now and you're going to add on to it to, to rent, then we, that form would be required. And at that point, you'd have to bring the whole structure up, up to, to. That's the way, that's the way the county, uh, the, Blount County forces it, that's the way North County forces it. All, all the entities are the same as far as that goes, because that really comes down to the state.
We enjoy.
You answered a question. I was wondering if it's purchase or build? It's a build. It's not a purchase.
Not a purchase. You know, you buy a house that's already built, we don't have any jurisdiction over that, what you do with it.
Is, is that the same stance that Blount County has as well, move its existing structure available?
Yeah. We don't have any less place in that, what you do with what's already built.
And I guess what the, what the idea is eventually over the years, it's just, all the older houses are going to be replaced with these newer houses and the whole census and everything will be complete at that time. So I was wondering, I want to go back and do a survey of all the houses and, and, and just one quick question here and I'll turn over you. The requirement for sprinkling, if it is a, uh, a rental, does that come from Blount County or from the state or?
I go to the state. They would have, they would have to follow the state regulations for that.
Okay. And is that something the state is, I guess they, they're encouraging, they want municipalities to do is to?
Yeah. It makes rental property, it's just another layer of protection for rental properties.
Sorry, Mayor. One more quick question. Unless somebody decides they're going to build their house and then the next year they decide they're going to rent it out, what repercussions and what teeth do we have to come back and say?
There's no, there's no, I mean, that's just kind of the integrity of individuality. You can, uh, we've already ran into that of a couple of folks that had built in Marywood, came up here and built and was like, I don't like the sprinklers. You're going to get there, no. Are you going to rent it? No. We don't have any jurisdiction over any of that right now.
Okay. Um, to the mayor of this next, then, Mr. Chairman.
Well, um, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, another commissioner that asked the questions that I want to, want to know, but just I'll ask again just to make sure it's clear. Uh, this is just for a building permit, for new construction or something that would add on to a house that would be used for a rental and it could require a sprinkle?
Yep. Nothing that's already built, it would not affect it at all unless you were building onto that structure.
Okay. And this is, this is something that we see in communities around us that's in the counties and, okay?
That makes sense. Okay?
Yeah. What I was just, uh, discussing thought in the past is that when you do it for just new construction, I think my law also considers for all buildings in the town. So that you know, even if they don't require the sprinkler system, and you say that you have a lot of part-time residents, and those part-time residents are renting out that this is for commercial purpose, they might give their idea to know who is doing that for commercial purpose and how you make it very unique from that. And if there's an added opportunity to, then you know who is doing what for the properties, not to say anything that you can't do this, but you know what commercial properties are being, are existing and that might be a route for some regulatory connection. So I would suggest you bring it up with the bill, or call it, to see how that might be qualifying with it.
Yeah. I think that's, that's, that's a good point, City Commissioner. Appreciate that. We are looking into what provisions we have for registration of these types of facilities and that, that's what would help us to get a handle on that. So, uh, it's, it's a good point you raised.
Chairman, I've got several questions.
Yes.
So first of all, this says exceeds three or more stories. Well, we already have a height requirement, section, page five and six, section 19 and 20, that you, you can't get to three stories within. So that's misleading. 5,000 square feet, that's huge. If it's less than 5,000 square feet, this doesn't apply. Seems like that number is, uh, inappropriate. Needs to be, if you want this to apply, you gotta, gotta have it applied to something that's going to really be built.
Yes. But you have to keep in mind this is a private residence as well. So I know if you put down 2,000 square feet and you have a private residence, you're going to force folks to sprinkle their home when it's never going to be used for commercial use.
But it might.
Well, it is to eliminate the rental property. But what, building rental property, and you could say that you want just rental property, but you also got to protect yourself if you build a 4,000 square foot house in the river.
Well, in B2, the limit is 4,000 square feet. You can't, you know, so there's a mismatch here. The other thing is this doesn't specifically talk about sprinklers. It talks about the state fire marshal and his jurisdiction, but it should also talk about the state health department for a rental facility. When some festivals that I participated in, the local health department had to come and inspect the cooking that we were doing at the festival, and that was because the state, the state health department told them to. So I think that's part of what's in here too. And 13 or more people, that's a lot of people and a lot of cars. And, um, I think this also has to be addressed on adequate parking for the type of, for the number of people and the type of vehicles. Like for instance, a RV that's 40 feet long in residential areas, it just, there's, it seems inappropriate that, uh, it seems like it doesn't clarify what you really mean. I mean, it's nice to have a form, but it's got to be clear what's covered in that form.
We're talking about sprinklers.
We are. I don't care how many cars you carry in the driveway, you can have 50 cars in the driveway, it doesn't matter to me. What I want to see is if you're building a house out here on the river and you're going to rent it and you have a bunch of college kids coming there, your place burns down, I don't want to see that fall back on the city and say, why didn't you know of sprinklers in this?
I don't see the word sprinkler system in this at all. I'm missing the point. Our, our marshals.
Well, I, I believe the reason why it's not spelled out is as to what the requirement is going to be. If you check this box, uh, as in you will have to sprinkle at this rate or whatever it is, the owner shall notify, um, the, the state fire marshal's office. And at such time, the state mark, fire marshal will tell them with whatever regulations they have on the books at that time, that's the requirement that they have to meet.
And builders, builders, people that are going to be doing this kind of stuff, you know that.
Yep. And that requirement's going to be changing through the years. So I'd say that's why it doesn't say explicitly what the requirement is. You just, you must contact the, and that, but there's a couple of other things with this as well that, uh, I, I think it's a good form, but I could see some work around with a lot of folks. They'd say, oh, I'm not going to have a rental property. And then a year or two later, they're like, well, I changed my mind, I'm going to rent it out. So if we do do this, I'd like to see some provisions in there. It's, it's established date, any residences built after this date, if they come in and apply for it, and we're going to address this at some point, tourist cabin owner culture. So if they come in and apply for whatever apartment or form they're considering, and this is going to have to be part of a, um, survey type of thing too. So the newer homes that are made that will be used for Airbnb, uh, have to have sprinklers. have to have sprinklers, or you want to retrofit a new-built home, it must have whatever the fire marshal, whatever their requirements are. So, there's a couple of other teeth and things I think we need to put in this, put on the outside. I think it's a pretty good recommendation to get a handle on and to also take the responsibility of the home builder to make it adequate for the intended use, if it is...
You can't put a permit in one county or one county without getting one of those two out.
Yeah. I do feel like without having something, we're leaving ourselves open. And, you know, there's safety reasons. And I think there's other things that our citizens have told us we need to get a handle on this kind of thing. And we've, you know, we're not down on new building permits. As far as I know, we're pretty steady and going on an upswing. So, I like this form. I think it would be very useful. I think it will fit and reinforce, as the chairman has said, some of the other things that we're looking to do. So, if there are specific changes that we want, you know, commissioners have identified a few. We ought to make these changes and move forward with trying to adopt this. So, I think I commend the building inspector for bringing us to our attention. I think we're missing something if we don't have the form. I do think we need to get it right and make it fit for purpose. But what I don't want it to do is to go round and round and round like this driveway permit. I'm going to talk about that momentarily. But this one, you know, let's amend it, get it right, and, you know, fit for Townsend, and try to bring this one back, I think, as quickly as we can.
I just think that it should reflect our ordinances. Like, three-story, you're not saying how high the floors can be so they could exceed our height restrictions. Those words should say height restriction instead of three-story. Just whatever's in our ordinances should fill in these lines. I understand you just took their document as an example, but we need to have the specifics match our current ordinances.
Okay. Thank you, Devin, for bringing this to us. I've kind of heard the same thing from the commissioners here. So, I'm going to charge the commissioners. We'll take in this document. Go ahead and mark it up and put any questions or comments or provisions you think maybe needed to be added to this. I'm going to suggest we have a workshop at the end of the session here. And this may be one of the items along with the jurisdictions that we can discuss.
So, am I just to avoid the confusion that's apparently in my mind? This is only to address sprinklers, is it?
No. It's only to address new, single-family dwellings that are being built within our city.
But that's it?
Well, right now, what this will do, it will trigger the individual to contact the state fire marshal if they know I have all whatever the red...
I would see it as sort of hitting on multiple purposes. It'll hit the sprinkler and the safety things. But it will also reinforce a registration system that we might have for overnight rentals and things of that nature. So, I think it could be mutually reinforcing of some of the other things that we're doing.
Okay. All right. So, we've got some homework to do on that. Item number four, corridor management discussion. Who is... Mayor?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll put this one on here. I want to keep this one on the radar of the planning commission. So, I'm aware that we continue to have T-DOT approving road cuts. And I'm seeing paving, all kinds of paving, happening in our precious green buffer zone. And we don't have mechanisms that adequately coordinate with T-DOT. If we had the mechanism to coordinate with T-DOT, like the driveway permit or corridor management plan that City Planner has recommended to us, we would be able to have a look at those things and at least have some visibility into them, if not able to ability to influence that. I'm really worried. City Planner has brought this to our attention several times, that if we don't pay attention to this, we're on a long, narrow strip. And if you start having road cuts and driveway cuts hilly-pickly every five yards, it's not going to be the same experience up here, you know, that we've had and that our citizens want and that our visitors accept. And so, we do need to pay attention to this. I realize that it evokes a lot of issues. And I've heard things, you know, said, "Oh, well, you know, that's too complicated. Townsend doesn't need this." But we do need this. We do need to pay attention to this, and we do need to be thoughtful about it. We don't need to have road cuts popping up. And, you know, people call me, say, "Well, I see that you're having a big paving there. There's another 40 feet." So, corridor management is something that I would really encourage this planning commission to take up. It's your job. So, on the workshop, you know, we need to take up and have what City Planners talked to us about corridor management. At a minimum, we need to get some sort of driveway permit in place. It doesn't need to be that elaborate, but we don't need to go round and round and round of that. We are losing... We are losing the battle. If we don't try to get some of these things in place. So, I'm encouraging the planning commission to take up corridor management, to take up the driveway permit, get that in place as quickly as you can. But then, you know, look at this corridor management. We're long and skinny. It's important. The face of our city, when people drive through here, that's what they see. And if we don't manage it, there's nobody else to manage it. City council does not... It's not our job to take the recommendation of the planning commission. You can get the advice from City Planner. Other communities do this. T-DOT supports it. They'll help us. It's not onerous. It's not that it's, you know, more than Townsend needs. We'll only make it as much as we need. But we have to pay attention to this.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Again, we discussed corridor management before. And you do that language prepared out on your corridor management.
I don't know. I don't manage prepared. I have this manual. And I've been going through it slowly but surely with a key and a... After I've gone through it, it would tell the town what they need to think about, decide upon what happened. And then, they will convey those wishes to T-DOT. But T-DOT has said that. They will then enforce it per what the laws of the eyes are and given their rules and regulations and engineering standards, et cetera. So, the idea is for the town to figure out where we can have the dedicated discussion of this at some later point, where maybe everybody has read the manual, how they need to go through it. I've already mentioned a number of times. Even one time, when Betty and I met at the RPO meeting and the T-DOT official was there, he came up there to give. So, when you're ready, and it's very important, as I've said in the past, if you risk this becoming like Kingston, right?
Do you... Can you provide a link to that document for Gayla to send to all the commissioners so we can... Because that's... We don't want to print out the whole thing for everybody.
I have about four copies.
Four copies? For anybody who might have a hard copy? Yeah. You can send an electronic link to me. So, the idea is, we're going to review this document. You're going to review it specifically. And you're going to coach and walk us through the different parts we're going to determine what the community wants or needs. And then, we'll express that to T-DOT. And then, T-DOT is going to make it happen.
Yeah. They're going to enforce whether those is prudent, will play their needs and play their engineering standards, et cetera.
All right. Sounds good. And then, we just touched a little bit on tourist cabin nomin stature. And you did mention the driveway permitting. I think these are all things that... There's no action involved in any of these items as I see them on the agenda. However, these are items that we'll need to have discussion. And well, as far as the driveway permitting, we may need to give a little bit of information out here as to what we want. I know what was presented before was a document that a lot of folks thought was untenable. It was too long, too technical, had too many caveats for having engineers draw plans and things of that nature. And I thought that the driveway permit... The driveway plan was a little bit over the top. Personally, I would like to see more of the controls given over to the building inspector that's going to be inspecting the permits in that the council, not the council, the commission, decides what larger parts we want to have in that. What I'm thinking of in terms of, if there's an existing curb, then a curb cut is made, and the curb is reconstructed to certain parameters. Now, we don't need to define those parameters specifically. If a curb cut is made on a gravel driveway that comes onto the city street, which is paved, then there needs to be a provision for some kind of an apron and retaining the gravel coming out. Drainage issues and things like that. But I think we need to make a list of the things we need the building inspector to pay attention to and the things that he needs to use his expertise to guide the individual and he needs to make his own determination as to what is required for that. And so, that's my thoughts on how to do it. The other document was pretty technical and caused a lot of conflict.
Just for... To keep everybody up, there was the original draft, as y'all started before I came. And then, there was the amended version that cut a lot out. Then, I had all of these questions. It was reviewed by our attorneys. And there were some answers here. And then, our last meeting, it was brought up, and it was decided, I think, that we have a workshop on this. So, there's where we are. Because on the amended version, the things that bothered me was the building inspector had the right to weigh plans and specs. I don't understand when you would ever weigh plans and specs. What was taken out was if you disturb a property, you had seven days to see it in straw. That was taken out. 15% grain on a driveway, that was taken out. So, it was a lot of stuff taken out that I think should have been... They've neglected too wide open, especially when we live on a mountainous community.
Okay. Yeah. We had two parts to that. There was the, what, grain plan?
One, like two-foot or...
Yeah. And then, there was a driveway plan. So, we had two separate things there that...
So, I'm just saying, our attorney reviewed it. And now, we're sitting at a workshop, so that's where we are. That was two months ago.
So, we want to pick up the old documents and keep going with them and see if we can get something out of them?
Well, I think we should start with what we already have on the books because a lot of this stuff was in the city code. And the new amendment said nothing revises the city code, but if you revise the permit amount, and then, if you go back to the city code, it was $20. So, it was...
Yeah. My sense is you can use the code to set the standard and use the form to be able to implement and allow the building inspector to have some latitude. But the main thing is you have to have enough information in the standard, not too much, but have to have enough. So, that it is the standard. And this, you know, this is not rocket science. We can get help from, you know, City Planner. We just need to commit to doing this.
Right.
And there is a need to have a permit and to have something in the code. So, I think it's clear at this point that there's a role for having something in the code and there's a role for having a permit. And you have to figure out what's the function of each of those and then, get the right words in there and then, get it across the finish line.
I think we need to start with what we have. And if it's not right, then we can adjust that and not start over.
Yeah. I think so. The building inspector has brought this to us several times and tried to bring it to City Council, I think, maybe once. So, again, you know, I think this body needs to just take action on it. I think workshop could be useful, Mr. Chairman. But I would encourage you to keep that on the agenda until we get this one done.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on the driveway permit? That takes us all the way through the new business. So, we've got old business, which there is no old business.
All this is, and we're back to my form, my word document.
Yes, ma'am.
You had told me three months ago you were looking into it.
Yes.
Actually, four months ago.
Yes. We got to try to get the PDF downloaded into a...
I don't want a PDF.
I know.
I want a word document.
Right. You want a word document. And so, we're working to get that.
I have been asking for that since January. It is August.
Well, okay.
And this is what I hear. So, let's recap. I had, when I was... When I was first came, I was given this book, right? I see inconsistencies because... That's why I was asking, who does the typing? Because it seems like things are added, but it's not updated. So, I asked for the word document just so I could go through and say, "This is this and that is that." And let the commissioners decide what it is because there are no revision dates in the book. I was told, "No, I cannot have that." And I thought, "Well, there must be a mistake. Why would me, the secretary of the planning commission, have a copy?" The city does not have any master copies. East Tennessee has all of them. In my opinion, we have hidden a blank check to change our documents. I have already seen... No, listen, I have seen changes. After our last workshop, it was in the wintertime, I asked and I said, "Okay." So, this... Number one, this mural ordinance that was signed in March of 2022 is not in the ordinance. And that's why I was asking earlier, who is responsible for this? It can't be us because we don't have the document. So, something from 2022 is nowhere in here. So, then, we start talking about this and we have that meeting. And I say, "All of this in red is the only thing that has changed, correct?" I'm told, "Correct." I'm like, "Okay, well, then, I see these changes." "Why?" I was told, "Don't look at that. I will... You will never have a copy. That is my copy." That is what I was told in front of you and in front of many commissioners. So, I wait and I wait. And then, you step in and, in my opinion, are blocking for East Tennessee. Because once again, I'm told again, we're looking into it. This has been eight months now. So, when I... Let me see where I am here. So, I was asked, anyway, the way that East Tennessee Development Representative has been speaking to me very disrespectfully, nothing's been done about that. I believe that there's a cultural difference. Where female voices are heard differently. No? No. At one point, the mayor said that he would look into it. The next minute, I was told, "I told you I would look into it." Here we are today. So, if I cannot have that document so we can work effectively and efficiently, look at just these... These pink highlights,